Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. For, is Mrs. Jacobs on the line? Nope, that's good. So please let the record reflect that Mr. Tucker, Mr. Kerr, Mr. Durnall, and Mr. DeMoss are all present. This first meeting we have tonight is the Board of Finance meeting, and the first order of business in this meeting is the election of officers for President and Secretary. Do we have any nominations?
I would move we leave the officers the same as last year.
I would second that nomination.
Okay, which would be Mr. Kerr as President, Mr. DeMoss as Secretary, is what it was last year. Is there any further nominations? Mrs. Jacobs on yet? No. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda would be designation of depositories, and for that we'll look to Dr. Sanders.
Yes, I'd like to recommend that the Board continue to use Peoples, State Bank, Old National Bank, and Trust of Indiana for our depositories.
Okay. Motion?
I'd move approval.
I second Dr. Sanders' recommendation.
Moved and seconded. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And our last item is to the report of the previous year investments and financial report, and so Mr. Irwin will give us that information.
One, we utilize Peoples State Bank and Trust Indiana as our depositories for our investments. The total interest on investments that the district earned during the calendar year 2021 was $42,851.07. This was a little over $8,600 higher than the cumulative total during the calendar year 2020. I did include on that a, below a breakdown of the interest on investments based on the different accounts, the biggest being just from the education fund, and the other two bigger ones being from the GO bond, and then there's the other smaller ones. You also get the indicators, as far as I presented you with some information from the DOAB website about the fiscal indicators, which we're required to talk about during the Board of Finance meeting every year. This started a few years back. It's really just to make sure that the Board stays up to date on the financial conditions at the school. A lot of the information that's on the DOAB site, we present that to you on a monthly basis. When you get the cash flows, you see where our fund balances are, you see where our projections are going. We talk about our ADM count, we talk about different things like that. The DOAB has that listed out for every school corporation in the state of Indiana. And so I provided you just with that information and a picture of those graphs and the website to where you can find that information. And again, the September count from this past year was back to near pandemic levels as far as prior to, and our annual deficit surplus stayed relatively flat from last year. Our fund balances have continued to get back to healthy levels during the last three years, and again, you see that on the monthly cash flows. And then our revenue by type is very typical. Obviously, our largest piece of revenue comes from our state tuition support, which makes a vast majority of our revenue that comes in, and then you have the property tax and the other smaller pieces that make up the whole pie. Our fund balances as a percent of our expenditures obviously increase as our fund balances increase. That particular graph that I showed you is more so made up of those three major funds with the addition of the rainy day fund. So they look at your rainy day fund, your debt service fund, education fund, operations fund, and again, we continue to get to healthy levels of financial means, which is a great thing for the corporation.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions?
Quick question. The interest, interest earned last year, does that go into the operations fund?
No, it goes directly into the funds that it was a part of. So the education fund one stays in the education fund, the GO bond one stay in the GO bond funds, and so within their-
So it's really, it's accumulated?
Yeah, it creates, yeah, it creates revenue within those individual funds.
Okay, and all those investments are, probably by law have to be fixed, interest rates, right? There's no-
Those rates are dependent on whatever the market dictates as far as we move those around between Trust Indiana and Peoples State Bank, depending on, depending on who's given better rates at the time, just to continue to accrue better interest for the school corporation.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? Hearing nothing, that will complete the Board of Finance meeting, and that meeting is adjourned. And I will call to order the Ritz-Williams-Bing-Boston School Corporations regular meeting for January of 2022. Is Mrs. Jacobs present yet? Okay. She was going to try to zoom in, but may have difficulties with that. So let the record reflect that Mr. Tucker, Mr. Kerr, Mr. Durnall, and Mr. DeMoss are all present, and Mrs. Jacobs is absent at this point. Our next item is visitor comments, so Mr. Irwin will call people up to present their comments.
Our first speaker is Anna Oresko. Hopefully I didn't say your name incorrectly, but Anna Oresko.
Hello, my name is Anna Oresko, and my husband and I have one child at EPS and another at EEECC. We have been and continue to be so incredibly thankful for the opportunities our children have at RBB. Our children's teachers are absolutely phenomenal. They are talented and hardworking, they are kind and loving, and I am thankful for them every single day. I hope you were able to hear my words of appreciation and support for our school community at RBB. Still, my husband and I do not feel that the current district policies support our children's best interests, especially those related to the contingency learning and safety plan. I recognize that COVID-19 is a very real and serious concern for families in our community, and that unfortunately loved ones have been lost to this virus. Still, our current and excessive policies regarding COVID-19 are hindering our children's education. Our students, the group least at risk, have the most stringent policies in place, and our kids are suffering. Yes, they are resilient, but the strength of their resiliency should not be the reason they are required to shoulder more. Of the many policies and procedures that have been put in place since the spring of 2020, I am very concerned with the district's handling of close contacts. An exposure has my healthy asymptomatic child home for two weeks. Before winter break, my preschooler was on day 13 of quarantine, when I received a call that my kindergarten was to identify as close contact, and he would start day one. I cried. I cried to my supervisor, I cried on the way to EPS, I cried in the office and the entire way home. How do working parents maintain employment when just a single quarantine wipes out sick time for the entire year? And even more important, why should my asymptomatic child lose two weeks of education? The last question alone has piqued my curiosity. Should close contacts be quarantined? Has experience revealed this to an appropriate, is it appropriate response? Last week, I called the offices of the superintendent and then the board president, Kerr. I explained to the kind woman who answered my phone call that I wasn't exactly sure who to talk to, but after listening to me, she directed me to Dr. Sanders. And I left a message. She assured me he would return my call. I ended up leaving messages for both gentlemen, but I did not hear back. I did speak to Dr. Sanders before this meeting and appreciate that we'll talk in the future. Still, I have two questions. One, what percentage of identified close contacts at school later test positive? Has this policy mitigated significant spread? Multiple published studies, including those from Illinois, California, and Britain, indicate that .7% to 1.5% of close contacts at school later test positive. Does that justify the lost opportunity of the other 99% of close contacts? My second concern was how and by whom is a safety plan created? The process is not transparent, and this is concerning. Our superintendent has told parents that the Board holds control as they approve the plan? The Board has told parents that administration holds control because they are the authors of the plan? Your involvement, the involvement of the Monroe County Board of Health is met with similar deflection. Please take responsibility for your decisions and your choices. Your autonomy is greater than you claim. Do what's best for our kids. Remember, you are the advocate of our children. That is your role. That's what you're entrusted with. Every time you make a decision, if you don't ask, is this best for our kids, then you haven't done them justice. I appreciate it.
Taylor Bartlett.
Hello, my name is Taylor Bartlett, and I am an eighth grader at the Edgewood Junior High School. I am here to address a few issues that also keep in mind, I'm not just speaking for myself, but a majority of my peers. My first concern is face masks. We believe the numbers show that they are not helping control the spread. Just consider the current number of sick kids there are. Also, there are those of us who have a hard time breathing in them for so many hours a day, and also having to deal with painful acne on some of our faces. My second concern is the discrimination and segregation you are causing among the children that are vaccinated and unvaccinated. You are supposed to be here to protect us, yet you are dividing us. For example, everyone knows our, everyone's status now. Unvaxxed kids have to be out of school more, therefore not getting the same level of education as others. It's as if history is repeating itself with segregation. It has proven that the vaccine lessens the symptoms, but we also have seen that it does not keep you from getting the virus. So I do not understand what logical explanation there could be in allowing the vaccinated children to stay in school when they are the close contacts and forcing the unvaccinated to quarantine. My final concern is, are you planning to continue to continue with the quarantines or not? The Monroe County Health Department has stated several times that schools cannot make their own guidelines. So why are you continuing with the guidelines you currently have? They don't seem to be working, except to keep healthy kids at home. The CDC states the median incubation period for Omicron is three days, Delta is four days, and the other are five days. So many times by the time we are traced, everyone has already been exposed during the time it takes to do that, therefore not stopping the spread like it is supposed to. I feel that quarantines are just making things harder for everybody, everyone involved, and making school harder for kids, when we can't be in school. You are supposed to be here to protect us and be our voices, but I feel the guidelines you have put in place are not doing that. Instead, they are causing mental stress, anxiety, and depression for many of us. How long do you plan on keeping going like this? We can't take anymore. I am but one in front of you, however, I speak for many voices with the issues I have brought to you today. I refuse to watch my little brother have his childhood swept away any more than it has been, or taught that we should live our lives in fear or by not having as normal of a school day as possible. You may be able to break their minds, but we are older and stronger and must fight for the younger. We are the same, or ma, we are the same, or making them more restrict- We are two years into this and should be working on our way out of the restrictions, not keeping them the same or making them more restrictive. I urge you to listen to the children who have had the courage to speak out and for you to know you have not gained control over our minds or swayed us into thinking that you have done anything that, anything you have done is for our benefit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Wickens. You all know me by now. I have a seventh grader at EJHS who is on his second quarantine as of today in a row for a total of 16 days, while he will most likely spend most of his time playing video games while he was perfectly healthy. I feel like a bit of a broken record, and I was struggling to come up with what to say that I haven't already sent you in emails or headphone conversations with you about. But the stories of the last two people that spoke are why I'm here. I hear from parents every day how much they're struggling and how much they're in pain, and they're having trouble with their kids, and I'm speaking on their behalf. So I guess what I would like to know is, when are we going to stop looking at the fact of contracting the COVID virus as a single safety issue, and start looking at the effects of the pandemic and protocols as a whole safety issue? What about all of the other unintended consequences that our keeping our kids safe is having on us? What about the staff who is burned out from having to spend their days contact tracing and calling parents? What about the teachers who are burned out from trying to teach in school and help those kids that are quarantined and learning online and trying to get them caught up when they come back? Or the class time that is interrupted daily by having to enforce mass rules? Or the stress teachers feel when they have kids in class? Significantly behind in grade levels because the last two years has been so hard on them, and they've been out so much? Or the kids who are stressed because they are struggling to keep their grades up after having multiple quarantines, or depressed from missing out on their activities and friends when they are completely healthy? Or about the parents who are stressed because they are missing out on income and are at risk of losing their jobs because their kids keep getting quarantined? When are those concerns going to be addressed? I know many would want to say, well, just get them vaccinated, and then they won't have to worry about any of that. But just going and getting vaccinated is not that simple of an answer like it may seem for those who don't oppose it. And the simple fact is, they aren't going to, or they would have by now. And now seeing that the majority of the positive kids out sick are vaccinated, that argument doesn't really hold, and the likeliness of them getting vaccinated now are even more slim. Not to mention, many of them didn't get vaccinated because they've already had COVID and have natural antibodies to protect them, which for some reason this society is not recognizing. And I want to also add that I think if the, if, if any of the parents and children felt like the protocols were working, this wouldn't be such a stress on people, and they wouldn't be so upset about it. Many say those things aren't happening, but I would challenge you all to find the numbers of what is and isn't happening. I've spent a lot of time this year, and especially in the last week, asking people their perspectives on the matter, or hearing their stories, and I'm telling you, these things are happening. I won't give you the examples right now because I'm running out of time, but worrying about only one safety issue is like worrying about having your seatbelt on but not checking or fixing the faulty brakes. It's time that we check our brakes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Andrews.
I am the librarian at EIS. I have four students in the Edgewood community, two seventh graders, an eighth grader, and a sophomore. I come to unite because what I've seen the last week and a half, the faces of the children walking past my door, downhearted because they're being sent home, because they sat by the wrong person, they were on the wrong bus, and that's what happened. Our own family, I was positive day after Christmas, and I had to do my quarantine. Because of that, my husband was positive, my youngest daughter was positive. My boys, during the entire time, didn't show any symptoms, but before Christmas, they had a little bit of a sniffle, and our, our COVID experience was very mild. So it really made me wonder that maybe my boys had brought it into the house to begin with, that they probably were positive from the get-go. So when I asked the school if I can provide an antibody test for my boys, will that cover them? I hear no, it's not going to cover them. My sons, today, went back to school for the first time. They were quarantined for 24 days. The reason why they were quarantined is because I have one bathroom in my home. I adopted a sibling group of four children, had a small house, but we lived within our means, and after every child used that facility, we went in there and scrubbed it down to make sure everything was clean, everybody was quarantined to bedrooms, but because we had one bathroom, my boys had to repeat the 10 days. My boys, one who has an IEP, who struggles hard in math, another one who has a 504 that is also struggling in math. When they came, I came home last week, and I looked at their grades online, they both had Fs. My eighth grader, who used to make these and Fs, who got honor roll last year for the first time, who has done nothing but strive, 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 work hard, 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 was making an F because he wasn't in a class being taught. Now, I will say that Mrs. Beaman did call him and zoomed with him and worked with him to try to get him caught up, but my other 504 student didn't have that luxury of having an IEP. So his dad and I, of course, as soon as we get home from work, that's what we did for hours, we sit there with him, teaching the math to get him where he is. Today, I looked at his math, he has an A+. The problem is, is this isn't working. My boys should not have had it been out for 24 days. And I will tell you, my seventh grader, Aus, last year, six weeks of school he missed in a row. He went to school three days in January last year, and he missed the first part of February because he would go on quarantine, never get sick, go back to school and sit by the wrong person, in van, or on the bus, and he was out another 10, 14 days. And the first time he looked at me when I said he couldn't go back to the 18th, he's like, we're not doing this again, are we? I can't do this again. And even for my boys, it was really hard. But the last thing we want to talk about is your staff. We are asking teachers to work six and a half hours a day with children in a classroom, plus turn around, take care of children at home. You need to make them time, whether it's an extra prep time or something. They should not have to go over their hours into their evening to teach a whole separate group of students. Thank you.
Marcy Edwards.
The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over expecting a different result. Well, here we are, after two years, doing the exact same thing. We don't have a different result, do we? For two, going on three years now, you have subjected our children to what I can only refer to as abuse at this point, covering their faces with pieces of cloth that are proven ineffective. You have implemented measures you say are for their safety. You have been close contact tracing and sending perfectly healthy kids home for weeks at a time. I have three, all three of my perfectly healthy kids at home right now for no good reason. Three different schools. I have asked repeatedly in these meetings to stop quarantining our healthy kids. Kids need to be at school for many reasons. Their education should be your primary focus. When these kids are in your, in this school under your guidance, they need the socialization, emotional needs met, physical needs, and some of these kids need to come so they get at least two meals a day. But it seems you have forgotten all of that. You are focused on a virus that might affect .01% of these kids. How many kids of our roughly 2,500 students have been hospitalized? I've recently asked this question to you, Dana Kerr, and you, Jerry Sanders, and I got the same answer from the both of you. Uh, I don't know. You don't know? Well, I guess it's zero. Both answer, okay? That's, that's the answer from both of you. You don't know. And then you say you guess it's zero. Then Dana, I asked you, okay, let, go ahead and tell me the numbers at the high school right now, and your answer to me was that you didn't know. So here we are, ladies and gentlemen, this is our Board, these are the representatives of our Board sitting up here saying they don't know. And not only do they not know, Dana Kerr, you said that it, you don't feel like it's your job to know those numbers. You're sitting in that chair as the President of our school Board, I think absolutely that is the minimum piece of information that you need to know to be up there making these decisions for our kids. You tell me you called the Indiana Department of Health, that's how you look at the numbers? You don't know. When I talked to you the other day, you didn't know if there was two positive cases in that high school, if there was 200. So let me break it down for you, Dana, and the rest of you, if you don't know either. On Thursday, there were 20 positive cases at the high school. Only six of those cases, FYI, are vaccinated individuals, okay? There were 122 people sent home that day as close contacts. So because of 20 positive cases, you send home 122 more kids, and there were 90 others out that day, Dana, in case you don't know, because you don't, you told me you didn't. Totalling 232 kids out on Thursday. Remove yourself. You're not working for us.
Next person is Tricia Myers.
I am actually speaking tonight on behalf of Melissa B., who was not able to attend. She has some kids, so elementary here at Edgewood, so this is from her. She says, I have seen a lot of people talking about how the schools are following IU. IU has updated their guidelines to match the CDC guidelines of five days. If you test positive, you are required to isolate, quarantine for five days from positive test. You can return on day six, provided your symptoms have improved and you have been fever-free for 24 hours or more without the use of fever-reducing medications. If you are a close contact and are vaccinated but have no symptoms, you are not required to quarantine. If you are a close contact and are not vaccinated, you must quarantine for five days. We decided after talking to some medical professionals that I trust that it was best for our family to go ahead and get vaccinated. However, that being said, I do 100% agree that it is a choice. The vaccine is not meant to keep you from getting COVID. In fact, we know that it does not. It is meant to hopefully not make you have a lighter, have a lighter case of COVID and not as likely to end up in the hospital or dying as a result. Therefore, those who are vaccinated should not be worried or feel threatened by those who are not vaccinated. I personally am not, and my kids are not either. My kids all have many friends who are not vaccinated and a few friends who are. They spend time with all of them just the same. We need to get back to letting these kids be in school. Stop having them quarantined unless they are positive or symptomatic. It is extremely important to their education and their mental health. I have three kids, one graduated, graduated last year, and the other two are still in school, and all of them have struggled to some degree because of COVID. It has turned their lives upside down. Yes, it has done that to all of us, but these kids are still learning, and they need to be in school to get the best education possible and also for social purposes. Mask optional is where we need to be headed. Anyone who chooses to have their child continue to wear a mask, that is fine, and they are completely within their rights to do so. However, I know it is getting harder and harder to keep the kids positive and to keep them willingly and appropriately wearing the masks. Like a lot of us, they are tired of it. I will not pretend to know the exact numbers from the surrounding counties, but I do know that Monroe County is the only county that has had a mask mandate, and our numbers are not any better than those counties without the mandates. So that should tell us that these masks are not working. The consistent quarantine is also determined, or detrimental, I'm sorry, to the families within RBB. Many parents work, and not everyone is fortunate enough to be able to work from home. This means that they do not have the ability to stay home with their kids and/or help them with the virtual learning. In addition, for many of them, it could mean losing their jobs, which then causes stress and other issues for the family that can put the family, and most importantly, the kids at risk for higher stress levels, potential abuse due to stress, lack of ability to afford essentials such as food, shelter, clothing, and more. There's a little bit more, but I'm out of time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Jody Myers.
I'm sorry, say that again because I'm hard of hearing. Okay, thank you. Hi there, good evening. This has been really hard to listen to tonight because I know mothers, single mothers, who are about to lose their job and who are losing months worth of pay. My daughter is a single mom with two kids, and if I weren't retired and helping her, she would be in that same boat. So I hope you all have your listening ears on as we tell our children. My name is Jody Myers. Most of you know me or know who I am. I've lived my entire life in the Ellisville area. I'm an Edgewood alum, as are my children and a grandchild. I have two children and one great-grandchild presently attending EEC, EPS, and EIS. Some of you have heard that speech before. I say all of that to say this, I have a vested interest in this community and in this school corporation. The truth is, I don't really know any of you. I know who you are. I've had conversations with a couple of you, but I don't know any of you, and you don't know me. What I do know is that transparency has gone out the window, common sense has gone out the window. Fear has taken over every part of many lives, but not mine. I have decided that it is time to fight back. I have with me tonight a copy of the Indiana Parents Bill of Rights from Indiana Attorney General Todd Raketa's office. I am in contact with them at least once a week. His liaison, Kim Harris, and I have been corresponding, and my concerns about RBB CSC are being heard and will be investigated. My latest concern to Ms. Harris is regarding the discrimination being shown to our children regarding vaccinated versus non-vaccinated status. From what I understand, the unvaccinated children are being treated differently and in some cases are being subjected to isolation upon return to school after quarantine. And although the CDC are now recommending a five-day quarantine, RBB CSC will not follow this new guideline. I will continue to fight for our children, mine and yours, and will do so with the assistance of Attorney General Raketa and other Indiana lawmakers. Thank you very much.
Lance-
Lance, I think Edwards.
Yes, I'm going to give my minutes to my wife.
I'm sorry, but if you would like to speak, that would be great, but otherwise, everyone's limited to three minutes for their, as an individual.
Is that a rule?
Yes.
He's not a public speaker, so he can't stand up here while I read for him?
No.
What are you afraid of, Dana?
I'm just following the rules.
Yeah, you're just following the rules. Hey, send me that one.
Tom Orman.
Hello, my name is Tom Orman. I'm vaccinated, boosted, so I'm not an anti-vaccine person. I also have healthcare workers in my family and believe that COVID is absolutely a real virus, but that it is a virus similar to the seasonal flu, RSV, and other coronaviruses. Some of these also have the potential to kill people and do so every year. I have a 13-year-old son in the school system who is not vaccinated, and that is a personal choice between us and his pediatrician. My son has just completed a 10-day quarantine for a close contact at school. One of his friends happens to be vaccinated and was allowed to stay at school even though both parents are positive with COVID, okay? Both parents have been vaccinated and boosted, just like me. My son has been doing e-learning all because he isn't vaccinated. So one child continues at school with COVID in the home while the other child with no symptoms of COVID in the home gets quarantined. Because he isn't vaccinated. Remember when we used to spray down our groceries? We no longer do that. We were careful what we brought into our homes or who could come to our homes because of the unknown. We've learned a lot over the nearly three years. The main reason you are here is to educate our children, not be their doctors. It has been proven that vaccinated can carry the virus and spread the virus with or without symptoms. You are here to educate my son not to segregate him from others. The families who are afraid to have their children attend school have the option to attend virtual. We don't have an option. We automatically get quarantined. This policy is designed to penalize the unvaccinated. While the vaccinated kids can and still do spread COVID, these parents would like to know the numbers from the school system, but you don't seem to know the answer. I know for a fact the majority of kids getting sick are vaccinated. Our children are not being hospitalized, hospitalized by this virus. They get COVID, they recover. I haven't, have I ever mentioned the mental health toll it has taken on our kids? Our biggest failure was shutting down our schools. We're letting the fear of adults affect our classroom and our kids. Thank you. The vaccine has become a license to spread COVID, but shouldn't be at the expense of our kids. You are educated. Teach our children, provide service that you are hired to do. We all appreciate the hard work that you all do for our kids in a safe environment, but we also want them in school every day when they are not sick. Get the mask off these kids. Cloth masks do not protect them. Stop contract casing and quarantine in healthy people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes for the December 20th, 2021 regular school board meeting. It includes the treasurer's financial report for December of 2021. And Mr. Durnall, could you give us the claims?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Gross wages, mini payroll on December the 9th, 2021, $1,400, $1,140 for gross wages on December the 10th, 2021, is $746,262.62 cents, 60 cents, I'm sorry. Gross wages, uh, tag, T-A-G, payroll, uh, December 17th, 2021, is $92,106. Gross wages tag again, mini payroll, 1220, 2021, $510. Gross wages, mini payroll, 1222, 2021, $1,661.57. Gross wages on 1224, 2021, $684,345.92. Also, claims prepays from 121 to 1231 is $2,773,711.65. Claims vouchers on 118, 2022, is $200,714.68. Force claim vouchers on 119, 2022, is $9,284.70 for a grand total of $4,509,737.18.
Thank you. We also have a number of donations to the Edgewood Junior High School Design Lab. They're from a lot of individuals, $5, $10, $15, $20 apiece. They also had decal sales of $31 and a bake sale of over $90. For personnel, we have resignations, retirements, non-renews, leaves, and terminations D1 through 3, and personnel appointments and transfers 1 through 12. Do we have a motion?
I'm of approval of the minutes and the consent agenda.
A second.
Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hear none? All those affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Mr. Irwin.
You guys should have two different sets of cash flows in you. One that's completely highlighted, that is the year end of 2021, and then the other one is the projections for the start of 2022. I'm going to start with just going through, just kind of highlighting how we ended the year in 2021, and then I'll talk a little bit about 2022 as well. Starting with the education fund, we, the education fund closed out the year above expectations, which is a great thing. Our year-end cash balance gives us a 15% cash balance of our budget for 2022, which is a very appropriate cash balance for a budget of our size. We did encumber all of the remaining appropriation to the 2022 budget, just to make sure that we continue to have enough authority to spend for the upcoming budget year. And debt service fund, we ended the year within appropriation and received our December property tax settlements. We also paid back the tax anticipation warrant that we had taken earlier in the year in 2021, along with the interest that was on that back to the bond bank. We will be taking the TAW for 2022. I expect it to be just a little bit north of $1 million. And again, those are interim funds between the property tax disbursement dates. A lot of our debt payments are due the first, they're, that first little few weeks of January. We'll keep that safeguard in place. The interest on that TAW is something that we already planned for in the 2022 budget process. That was part of some of the things that you guys approved during the budget process and the also resolution that we did for it too. In the operations fund, the operation fund ended the year higher than expected. We didn't realize the amount of property tax cap loss that we had anticipated through the circuit breaker report and some of the other projections that we did, and that's a great thing to us. We did encumber around $475,000 to the upcoming budget year. Again, that's just encumbering appropriation, which again, appropriation is just the authority to spend. It's not actual cash. To the 2022, and again, we're very pleased with where we ended the year. We're, we're in a great position. We ended in a great spot financially, and again, that's just continues to the positive notes that we've had throughout the year, and we're very pleased with that. Talk a little bit about 2022 projections. I gave those to you for all three funds. Again, much like 2021, and I would say even more so than 2021, we don't expect to make large cash balances like we did a couple of years ago that were close to $1 million. That will not be the case in 2022, which is okay. Again, because I told you, as far as year-end cash balances is where we stand, we're, we're at a very stable place, and we're very pleased with that. We do expect a slight decrease in some of our tuition support in the upcoming months when we get to February count. As typically in a given year, most school corporations, because of midterm grads and things like that, their count goes down a little bit. The state doesn't continue to give you tuition support for midterm grads, even though that your, your, you know, your staffing doesn't change, but they don't continue to fund once you have a midterm grad. They fall off your count, and so we always experience that, and that's pretty typical for us. We do have the increase in funding starting in July as that new budget year through the legislation shows the increase in funding that'll come along with the next fiscal year that starts in July of '22. And again, just looking at debt service, that's, that's according to what we know through our budget order with the 1782, and what we expect are, we know our lease payments and things like that to be on our debt obligations. And then operations fund looks to be very stable as we projected that out, again, using all the information that I told you about with the 1782, and then all the things that we did, we encumbered from the 2021 year. With that, I'll take any quick questions that you guys have.
Questions?
I just had a quick question. What, on the tax anticipation warrants, what, what's the normal timeframe that we, is it like a two-month window where we have to use that money?
Uh, well, what it does is it keeps, it keeps that fund balance positive. It keeps it from going into the negative. The way that they calculate the amount that you're eligible for is based on the maximum amount of deficit that you would have through the, the payments that we have to make. So a lot of our payments on our debts are due in January and the other ones being in July. And so this just helps keep the fund balance where it needs to be through those interim months with our property tax dispersments coming in in June, December. So it is based on what our maximum deficit would be.
A lot of one-month wiggle room between both?
It essentially gets you, yeah, it keeps, it keeps you above balance, because you're not going to have expenditures through the debt service fund typically of, you know, cash payments, you know, through February, March, April, May. Typically, those payments are always either June, December, or January, July.
Okay, all right.
Any further questions?
I just appreciate, Matt and I had a discussion about the cash balance, the year-end cash balance. He gave me some additional perspective. I told him I was still trying to get my head wrapped around the way that, the way that that worked, and it was very helpful, and I, I enjoyed our discussion, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Now we have consideration to approve the 2022, 2023 official school calendar and the 2023, 2024 tentative school calendar. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so every year, I, I ask the board to approve the next year's calendar as the official calendar, and then the following year is a tentative calendar. And so I try not to make too many changes when we move the tentative calendar to the official calendar. So, so I'm asking the board to approve the, the 2022, 2023 school calendar and make it our official calendar. The only change from what you approved last year is we're, we're moving the parent-teacher conferences from September 22nd and 23rd to November 7th and 8th. Everything else is pretty much the same. We're asking you to approve the, the 2023, '24 calendar as a tentative calendar. Now, we did make some changes here. We are moving up the start of the school year by almost a week in order to even out the number of days in the grading period. We are starting, when we come back after Christmas break, students and teachers will start a day later, but that's due to June 1st being on that Monday, so pushes everything back a day. And then finally, we, we have some snow days built in our calendar that we've traditionally put at the end of the, the school year. Now, we will try to use our e-learning days as much as possible, but if we have a really bad stretch, we don't want to use too many e-learning days in a row, so we might have to, to have a, a, what's called a traditional snow day. And so what we're doing is taking those two days at the end of the year and placing them in the middle of the school year towards the end. So for this '23, '24 calendar, those snow days will be March 29th and April 12th. And so if we don't use them, everybody has that day off.
Three-day weekend.
Uh, we, I conducted a survey for, with our school staff on the, their insights on the '23, '24 calendar, and that we pretty much align with as much as possible the results of those surveys. And we also run the calendar and have a discussion with our teachers association, and we send up the calendar to our teachers and staff, and they're able to give us input and also input from our school administrators. So I recommend that you approve both of these calendars.
Thank you. We have motion.
I'd move approval.
A second.
Any questions, comments? And I'm pretty sure we had the parent-teacher conferences moved up this, this, this year because of some training that we needed to do. So I like that we're pushing those back again to give the teachers more time with the students. Is there anything further? Hear none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the consideration to approve a resolution for 2022 transfers from the education fund to, oh, I'm skipping, consideration first, consideration to approve a stipend to instructional assistance needed to substitute. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so we are wanting to ask you to approve a $25 per day stipend to any IA that we would have to use to cover a classroom. Part of the, the byproducts of COVID is that it's created an even greater sub shortage that we have. Despite a lot of our efforts to continue to get more subs in, we still have shortage, and, and on days, we're shorthanded enough that we have to pull instructional aids to try to cover a classroom. That's, that's been something that hasn't, not like it's never happened before, but it's happening a lot more because of the sub shortage and staff shortages sometimes to make sure that we're able to cover the rooms. And so when this, the, the IAs do that, they're taking on some little bit different responsibilities than what they would typically have during, during the day. And so we want to make sure that we can take care of them in that way. I would like for this to, to start as of the start of second semester of this year, so then we can look back. And so the way it would work is at the end of each month, the principals would give us a report of which IAs had to cover during a given month, and then during the first pay of the next month, and they would be paid out for those extra days, or for those days that they had to sub. So with that, we ask for your approval for that, please.
Have motion?
I'm of approval of the stipend for the IAs that are subbing in our classrooms.
A second. Do you have a quick question, Mr. Irwin? Is that, is that K-12?
Yes.
Across the board, okay. And is that, that is coming, becoming more of a problem?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? All those affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And now on to the resolution for 2022 transfers from the education fund to the operations fund.
So this resolution is just an annual ask of the board. We set an up-to amount. The state says that we shall transfer no more than 15% of the education fund revenue into the operations fund to support the payroll of staff. And when they change the funds, they change where different people were paid for from different funds. So they set that 15% mark. We are below that mark. This past year, we were at 12.7%. Again, when I set the, when I set the up-to amount that's on this resolution, it just gives us a, a buffer of what it is that we could transfer up to. So I set that mark based on expected revenue. That 15% is based off of total revenue that comes into the education fund, not just the tuition support dollars, but total revenue that would come into that fund. And so it gives us that cushion. We do not plan to, to transfer up to that amount, but if for whatever reason there was the need to do it, it just keeps us from having to come back and do this again a second time. And so again, on the monthly cash flows, you see what we're transferring on a month-by-month basis and what the plan is moving forward throughout the school year. So with that, I ask for your approval.
I'd move approval.
I'd move approval.
I second.
Uh, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is also with Mr. Irwin, is consideration to approve the purchase of school buses.
So during the budget process for the twenty-twenty-two budget that was there at the end of twenty-twenty-one, we had put forth the bus replacement plan. We continue to move forward with replacing two more buses this school year. So we're asking for your approval to replace two of our buses. One of them is a special-needs bus and another one is a seventy-eight-passenger bus. We've done the required bidding for those buses. Um, the prices on just about everything has gone up and just like the buses. So they are more expensive than what they've been in years past. The special-needs bus, we made sure to order it with all the things that we need to come on it so that we can serve our kids' needs that would need to ride that bus. Um, and with your guys' approval with that tonight, Audrey will move forward with making the order. The buses take several months to come in. Um, once those buses come in, we'll take the buses that they're replacing and we'll surplus those buses and then sell them in auction with that, those funds kinda helping to offset, hopefully, some of the increase in costs that have happened over the last year. With that, I ask for your approval.
Any other motion?
I'd move approval for the purchase of the two buses.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
I just had a quick question. I, I, the pricing just is, is unbelievable how much it's changed since three years ago. On, on the, uh, special, uh, needs bus, how many, is that, I know it's got some type of wheelchair apparatus. Is that correct?
It has a wheelchair lift in it, yes.
And how many, how many seats will it also s- for other children?
I believe thirty-six.
Thirty, okay, okay, so it's a little bit bigger than I thought, then. Okay, alright, thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we have the permission to void corporation and ECA checks that are older than two years as of December thirty-first of twenty-one.
Yeah, so this is a yearly ask of the board, and it follows board policy that we do this, uh, at the end of each year. Um, and so, uh, again, we're asking to void corporation and ECA, uh, checks that are two years old or, or more as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. With that, I ask for your guys' approval.
I move that we void the two-year-old checks.
I second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to approve the EECC rates for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Is that, is you, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, I can take that one. I think Mr. Wood's here as well, and if he, he can come up and answer any questions if you have them. But again, I gave you guys his memo for that. We, we talked, um, quite a few times over the last few years, um, about where the preschool is headed and what it is that, um, that we wanna do and how we wanna place ourselves within, um, the services that we provide to our students within our community and, and around the Monroe County area. Um, we gave you a historical look as to what the half-day rate was and the full-day rates were as of twenty, all the way back to twenty-nineteen. For this upcoming school year, there would be no, there would be no raise in rate for the half-day rate. The full-day rate would go up two dollars and fifty cents per day. Uh, again, it places us very competitive with the other preschools in the area. And again, with our attainment and all the work Matt and the preschool staff of moving to past equality, um, level three, um, we are definitely below average of what most places of, of that category would charge. So with that, we're asking for your approval to, uh, set the rates for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year for EECC.
Have motion?
I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions?
I, I just have a couple for Mr. Wood. We're, I know we're getting ready to open up in, I guess, in February, a new extension, correct?
Correct.
Are we increasing our number of available slots, or are we still unb- unbacked up on that?
Sure. Because we had planned, uh, originally to be in that facility at the beginning of this year, our current enrollment, our current, uh, number of classrooms was set at the beginning of this school year for that, that new space. So we have four preschool classrooms available in that, in that new facility. And currently, we, we already have those four classrooms inside Edgewood Primary School. So those school, those classrooms are ready to just make this shift over to the new facility when it opens.
Is there, is there possibly that we can use the new center and a couple rooms from the ones we're exiting? To take care of the demand?
That's beyond my ability to, of course. I, I would, I'd love to. Uh, you, could we support it with our enrollment numbers and our waiting list? Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a concern I've had from parents, just, there's just a waiting list right now, and that's just a major concern.
Some of the rooms that they're using now are used for other things.
Okay.
Should be like steam labs and things. So they would go back to their, uh, intended use.
Okay.
They're just in there now because of the, uh, issues with materials, um, to, to get the construction of the, the building.
Okay, alright. Alright, thank, thank you for all you're doing for the, the preschool.
Could you explain the level-three? Uh, I know that you've done that with us before, but I think it's worth repeating.
Sure, yes, in order to advance to past equality level-three, um, there are several criteria beyond the basic safety requirements necessary to meet a level-two. The most significant two requirements to reach level-three on, on past equality in the state of Indiana are, one, a viable curriculum. Uh, we use the creative curriculum from Teaching Strategies. Uh, we implemented that, uh, when I started, um, this is my, my third year, so at the beginning of my time. The other is an education level of the staff. Um, fifty percent of our staff at all times needs to hold either, um, a bachelor's degree or higher in early childhood education, an associate's degree or higher in early childhood education, or sixty credit hours of work toward either one of those degrees. Um, so that's, those are the, those are the two biggies, uh, are the education level of the staff and the curriculum that's in place for students. Uh, when a, when a center advances to, to past equality level-three, um, there are several avenues of state funding and grants, uh, for which they become eligible, the, the most notable of which is On My Way Pre-K, which means that families who qualify financially, um, and have students who are entering kindergarten the following year can receive tuition-free preschool.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
That's a, that's a quick nutshell.
Right.
Yes, yes, that's, I just think it's important for the community to realize what valuable asset the, the preschool is and how, uh, as you said earlier, our rates are very competitive, much lower than what you would see with, uh, a level-three quality, uh, program. So thank you very much for working to get us there. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item is consideration to approve revisions to our contingency learning and safety plan. And, uh, it's a informational, uh, item. Uh, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so, uh, my job as a superintendent is, uh, to lead RBB as we do our best to balance the academic safety and ma- and mental health needs of our students, to consider the impact our, to, our decisions do have on our working parents, to balance the safety and mental health of our staff, to consider, uh, the many different insights of our students, parents, and staff, to make sense out of so much that really doesn't make sense in this pandemic. As you can imagine, that's a, a tough, uh, list there to achieve all those things. But it's a job that I'm honored to have. Um, and whether we agree or disagree, I truly appreciate, uh, all of our parents. And, uh, I learn from every conversation I have. I, I had a great conversation with, uh, Tom Orman not too long ago, uh, today with Melissa Wickens, and they all have very valid points, uh, that, uh, over the last two years, uh, I have really learned how to, uh, consider the many different views that, uh, people provide me. Um, for nearly two years, uh, we've persevered as a school community through many tough challenges. And each time we get through one of those challenges, at least I know you want to, everybody would, would join me in thinking this way, I think, okay, we're past the worst part. But yet, here we are, January eighth, two thousand twenty-two, facing yet another challenge related to COVID-nineteen. Unfortunately, over the past, uh, three-day weekend, we had, uh, twenty-five positive cases, uh, reported to us. Just today, we had three positive cases that, uh, reported at EPS, fourteen at the intermediate school, seventeen at the junior high, and twelve, uh, at the high school. Uh, so we are definitely, uh, our community is facing a real surge with COVID-nineteen. And when that happens, as being part of the community, we follow suit. We, we end up having a sink, a kind of a surge. We are experiencing, uh, significant staffing surges, surges. And quite frankly, it's interesting that all of our speakers, uh, were, uh, stating that they would like to see us, our kids be more in, in school more. And quite frankly, we're working as hard as we can with these staffing, uh, shortages to keep our kids in school. Uh, we, uh, talk daily with our principals about our, our staffing shortages, and we try to, uh, uh, come up with, uh, plans to make sure that we, uh, safely provide the right number of adults to supervise our students, to keep them safe, uh, but yet, uh, maintain school and keep the students coming to school. Uh, Monroe County and most of the state of Indiana is a- at the red level. Uh, it's my understanding, uh, that the situation in our hospitals are very bad. So as a person charged with maintaining the safety of our students and staff and, and the community, our school parents, all of you, uh, uh, entrust me with that, that job each and every day to keep our students safe. I make the call for, uh, weather, uh, bad weather days, and we make sure that our schools are, are secure with our, uh, school resource officers. So, uh, based on that, um, I feel it is our best interest that we maintain for now our current safety plan, which includes the quarantine periods of seven, ten, and fourteen days. Once the current surge is, is over, uh, and our situation begins to improve, I do recommend that we move to the five-day quarantine period. However, I just don't think that right now is the time to do that. And as I've mentioned in previous board meetings, uh, we are under a mask order in Monroe County. So the fact that we have our students wearing masks, that's a requirement. It's not an option. We are also under our governor's executive order, which requires schools to, uh, do contact tracing and do quarantine. That also is not an option, that's a requirement per the governor's executive order. So that's my recommendation tonight, is to continue with our current plan. And as the situation improves, uh, we're ready. We've, uh, we've created the revisions to our safety plan that reflects the five-day quarantine period. So just as soon as we can get to that safe window, uh, I will let the, the board know that, that I feel like it's time to do that and, and get your input, your thoughts on that. And we'll also share that safety plan with our school community. Uh, one other change I just wanted to share with you is, um, the COVID update emails that, that I send out. Uh, so I know some, uh, folks really like those emails and some do not. And so we're gonna make a change with that. Uh, instead of sending out the daily, unfortunately lately it's been daily, uh, COVID update emails, we're going to provide that same information, but just put it on our website. So if somebody wants to know how many positive cases that we've had on a given day, they just can go to our website, they go to, to families and then COVID information, and there'll be an updated, uh, table there. Uh, I will, uh, up, we will wait until we've contacted all close contacts before putting the numbers on there. And some days, it might be at the very end of the day based on, uh, what other, uh, activities or, uh, tasks that I had to, to work on, on a given day. But we will try to keep that updated on a daily basis. They could go for that information and see it if they're interested. And if they're not, then they don't have to go to, to check that out. Uh, and then, of course, they could go to the state website and check out the long-term, uh, data uh, and see how our schools are doing. And you could also compare how we're doing to other schools. You could look up other schools in the county or across the state and just see how, uh, Edgewood Schools compare to other schools. So, um, that's my, uh, report on our safety plan.
Any questions? Thank you. Um, there are no miscellaneous or informational items, so we'll move now to the superintendent's report. Sanders?
Yes, um, I just, uh, every year at, at the January board meeting, I like to share, uh, my goals for the year. And they really don't change from year to year because they, they pretty much drive, if have been driving, uh, what we've been trying to do in our school corporation. Uh, uh, the goal number one is to continue leading RBB to a position of financial strength. And, uh, one of the best things we did was hiring, uh, Matt Irwin. And, uh, so he continues to help, uh, us to, to do that. Uh, every day, we, uh, work on trying to do business better. We look for ways to improve our efficiency, and we're always trying to target, uh, areas of potential savings. Uh, our goal number two is to lead RBB to a sustained growth in enrollment. And, uh, we were hearing about our preschool program and, and, uh, and I understand we, we do have a, a waiting list. And, uh, but we wanna continue to grow that program, not just in numbers, but in quality. And that, and that's the important thing that, that Matt talked about. And I'm glad you asked that question, Dana, uh, about the, the past equality because that's, that's important too, most important actually. And, uh, having the preschool, uh, connected to the, the primary school uh, really helps our teachers to connect with, uh, preschool teachers, to connect with our kindergarten, first-grade teachers, and our students and their parents who are in the preschool to feel part of our school community. And so we wanna continue to, to grow our preschool program. The RBB welcome team that, that we've put together, uh, with our new communications coordinator, um, Brittany Tucker, she is working to, uh, uh, get that team back together. We kinda got delayed because of COVID issues, but, uh, she's got that team, uh, I think, meeting tomorrow, I believe. So, uh, we're, we're anxious to get that, that ball rolling again. And, um, and also to work on our, um, marketing plan. So, uh, Brittany will be coming probably in February, I said January, but we've pushed that back to February that she'll be coming and presenting our new marketing plan to, uh, the school board. Goal number three is to, uh, lead RBB into a strong partnership between the school corporation, our families and local businesses in the community. And, uh, so we are going to, we're continuing to try to approve our communication. That's another reason why we ha- hired a communications coordinator. Um, we're going to start to soup with the soup, uh, focus group back up. Uh, Ready Schools is an important part of us trying to make those connections, uh, to, uh, the, the community and our local businesses. Uh, goal number four is to lead RBB to creating an educational environment designed to prepare students for success in their career of choice in tomorrow's world. That's all about Ready Schools. And, uh, also in February, we'll be having Jamie Miller come and do, uh, give you an update on our Ready Schools initiative. Uh, but we also want to make sure that we're provi- we are meeting the mental health needs of our students. And, uh, that's why, uh, a few years ago, we, we created a mental health team. And they still, they continue to provide the services that helps us to meet the needs, the mental health needs of our students. And then, uh, with our professional learning communities, and we've been doing a lot of professional development with that. We have some of that at the beginning of the school year, trying to provide teachers more, uh, purposeful time to work on curriculum, to, to collaborate on, uh, where we could go as a school corporation to make sure we're providing the- the highest quality instruction. And then, goal number five is a lot of what we've been talking about tonight, and that's to lead our response to COVID-19 pandemic. And we need to make sure, we have a constant effort towards making sure that throughout the pandemic, that we're doing our best to meet the academic, mental health, and safety needs of our students. And so, I would love to be able to sit down with each of you board members individually, if you'd like to talk more about these goals, or the community, as a matter of fact. And then on the back, and I won't go through it, but on the back is some information on our construction projects. We did receive a certificate of occupancy for our Innovative Learning Center, and so the robotics team already has moved in there and has taken claim to part of our Innovative Learning Center. We're still working on punch list items for that, but it's definitely something we want to use as quickly as possible. If you have any questions on the construction projects, just let me know.
Thank you very much. Next, we have RBB EA comments and Sam Jones. He's here with us tonight.
Hello, everyone. For those of you that I've not had the pleasure of meeting, which I think I've had the chance to meet all of you, but just for record, my name is Sam Jones. I'm the co-president for the RBB EA with Doug Yules from Edgewood High School. I'm currently a pathways teacher at Edgewood Junior High, and this is my second year in the corporation. For the sake of staying organized, I just have a few things on here. You know, as we get into the third nine weeks, it's always the long stretch from Christmas break into spring break. And so, weather's cold, you know, it's just, it's dark out all the time. So it's really a time that negativity can set in. And one of the challenges that we have put out to our teachers and continue to have conversations about is kind of finding the gift in the garbage. Because there's times where we look at the emails, we see the positives, we're watching our kids going in and out of the classroom, and it's really easy to get downtrodden on a number of things. And I just put out something today to some of our discussions people that we meet with Dr. Sanders and Matt each month, and it was amazing how a call at seven o'clock this morning for just some of those gifts in the garbage, those, maybe those forgotten victories that tend to fall during that dark time, how quickly by eight o'clock, I had six or seven responses. And I thought, what better time, as we kick off the second semester, than to talk about some of those things really quickly and just remind ourselves that even as we get into those negative times, and those dark times where we can get down, there are so many amazing things that are going on right here in our buildings. Brandy Abel from EPS said, "My kudos goes out to Vicki Entrickin and her team for keeping our building pristine. They are stretched so thin right now, but our building is always clean and in top shape for our kids and our staff every morning." Kristy Bennett from EIS said, "Cindy Bentley is rocking it as a health aide, and she works so hard and does it 24/7." Lauren Christie from EJHS added, "I hope we can highlight how wonderful our health aides are. They are really giving it all and trying to triage kids, manage normal health center operations, and being there is to support when we have worries from families." I want to make sure that we're also appreciating and thanking our front office staff and our custodial staff. They are truly keeping ships afloat right now. And, you know, you look at a lot of these people, a lot of these people are hourly workers. You know, they are coming in and they're giving their hours, and sometimes they're capped, but those hours get extended past because they just care about our kids, they care about our staff, and they care about keeping us, keeping us going. Sue Demoss went on to say, "I love hearing in the hallways from our colleagues" when they go on to say, "I'm so glad to see you there," as they look out to the kids as they're coming in each day. And she went on to say, you know, "Those are the things that really warm my heart each day, because that's what makes it great about working here, is that despite the email that we may see of losing a couple of our kids, or the communications that we're having with families about their worries about their kids being put into quarantine, at the end of the day, the teachers and the hourly staff and everyone, they're just wanting to be here in front of our kids and being here for our kids." I personally got the chance to witness another gift today. With working with the Pathways Program, we have kids that come from Spencer Owen as well. Both of the buses for Spencer Owen that send their kids into our corporation, both of their drivers were put into quarantine, and they called us late last week and said, "Hey, you know, right now, we're not going to be able to provide transportation for these kids," and that was a worry for them. Nick McGuinness and Jenny Johnson stepped up. They were able to get access to the Spencer Owen van and individually drove out to each of their houses and picked up those kids and brought them in so they could be educated in our schools. And those are just some amazing things that people go day to day, and they probably don't hear those names that I mentioned. They probably don't think about those things that are going on as they're dropping their kids off, or you're just driving through our community. But those are the people that need to be put as a highlight as well. And so, we wanted to make sure from the RBB EA that we take time to thank those people. And, you know, it's just a small thing. Each of those things may be considered small, but the sum of all parts makes this thing work. And we are also so appreciative of the people, our community leaders, our school leaders, everyone that's sticking their neck out to make sure that our kids' best interests are at heart, and to take care of their teachers and to represent their community. It is a dark time. We are getting, we do get frustrated with things, but we will prevail because our community is strong, and that goes with our leaders and our teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have board member comments, and I'll start with Mr. Moss.
Well, welcome, Sam. Nice to see you in this, in this position. I give Mr. Yules a hard time for not showing up tonight. As I understand it, he was in Duluth about 36 hours ago and drove back. And I can't imagine why he didn't think he wanted to be here tonight. And also, your phrase, "gift in the garbage," the report I got was that as soon as you said that, one of the other teachers said, "I'm stealing that." I got the opportunity, well, first of all, on Facebook and Twitter, I saw pictures of the coffee shop here at the high school, and I'm really excited to get in, sit in operation soon. I got to act as the emcee for the robotics competition at EIS on Saturday, and I want to compliment John Kerr and all of the volunteers and the parents, but especially the kids. That was the most exciting competition watching. I believe there were about 160 kids that were, they were just going crazy getting their robot to do what they wanted it to do. And I couldn't even figure out what they were able to do, but I was standing there trying to describe it. It took me about three or four matches as the emcee to get to a point where I knew what was, how they were scoring points. But it was, it was just amazing, and the effort and the creativity and the excitement and the enthusiasm, it was just, it was wonderful. And then finally, the silly season is in full swing at the Indiana General Assembly. House Bill 1040, I have to express my disappointment in the author because I went to school with him, but it should be called the Teacher Shortage Exacerbation Act. I hope that some cooler heads up there prevail and keep this ridiculous piece of legislation from going any further. But I can't imagine teaching under the conditions that this would create, and having to constantly be looking over your shoulder and say, find out if you're saying something that is controversial. So, I don't know what's going to happen with that, but I hope that they get their act together. But that's all I got today.
Mr. Gurnell?
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. The only I would have is that by the primary edition today, and I'm just overly pleased how that looks. It's just beautiful. It just blends right in like it was built right with it. So, I'm pleased with that. Sammy, what a great review. Thank you so much. I appreciate, I've called him Sammy since we were little, but so, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Glad you're here with us too, teaching for it. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
Okay, thanks tonight for the people that made donations to the corporation, and thanks for the parents that spoke tonight. We do listen. Sometimes we both can agree to disagree, and even amongst the school board, we can agree to disagree. But at the end of the day, I do, I do respect the job Dr. Sanders is doing, and my colleagues here. And Ms. Wickens made a point, and my mind is about ready to explode with just the whole world right now. You've got the quarantine, you've got the COVID positive, you've got the COVID negative, you've got people waiting in line to get tested, and you have the mental health part. You've got the mental health, do you have them, do you not have them? Then the next part, and I deal with this as a business owner, I, two team members, they have to go home and take care of their kids. And that's another aspect of this whole thing, because you don't want your kids unsupervised at home. Then I start thinking about the staffing. You've got the shortage of possible staffing, as Dr. Sanders mentioned. And as I get wound up last week, that's another element that he has to bring to my attention, that we need people here to take care of our kids as well. And staffing has concerns as well. Like I had a gentleman today, he had to take off because his kid's daycare shut down. So, they don't have a choice. They had to take off and take care of their kids. So, there's so many different barnacles in this situation. And then you've got the discussion, vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So, at the end of the day, Dr. Sanders, I do agree, as soon as you can get us back to, with the CDC, get consistent with that, I'd appreciate that. And we don't have a choice on the mask. I get it. I don't like it, but I'm going to respect what Monroe County does say. When I drive into Putnam County, I take my mask off. It's the difference between two counties. The two counties apart. So, I'm done arguing with family members. Do you get the vaccination, do you not? It's, we all have to make our own decisions, and we have to try to get along. So, with that being said, Dr. Sanders, if I may, I got, I got an email this week, and I just want to read one quick thing, okay? And this kind of sums it up. It helped me wrap my arms around this whole thing. It said, "Let's hope this isn't a question on the I-Learner or the SAT this year." Mr. Jones, you'll appreciate this. And you probably know where this came from, Mr. Jones. You know, 10 years from now, there's going to be a standardized test with a math problem that says, "If Matt was exposed to COVID on Tuesday, and had no symptoms four days later, and he got it from Suzie, he caught it at a party three days before, Matt had tested positive five days later, how likely is it Matt's little brother going to test positive on an antigen test if he tests two days after Matt's test positive?" That's the way I feel right now. It's like, it's like a crazy time, and I just hope everybody can still try to keep together, get along, so we can get through this for our kids and move forward and get past this in a few months. So, thank you.
I do appreciate everybody coming this evening. I do appreciate the comments. And I do support a move to the CDC guidelines as soon as we can. Again, I don't believe that that's today. But what I, what I've been hearing is this spike hopefully is very large, but will be for a short duration. And if that's so, then I'm really hoping that in the very near future, we can, we can make these changes that the people this evening were looking for. It's, it's not that I, you know, want to keep the way it is right now forever. I sure don't. I really don't. And I understand all the comments that you've made and all the reasoning behind it. You know, if we weren't two and a half times as bad as we've ever been before, you know, then it'd be a different story. If this, if this came up in the middle of December, I would have been so supportive of going to it. So, I, I am supportive of going to it as soon as we can. Again, as Dr. Sanders said, today's not that day, but hopefully it'll be here in the very near future. So, I do listen to what you've said. And no, I don't keep track of the numbers every single day, what's happening. I do rely on Dr. Sanders to let me know how things are going. I do get those emails that you get as far as how many new cases we have. And a board member is in a governing body, not in a day-to-day role, where we're in the, in the schools, in the classrooms, in the administrative offices every day. That's not, not our role. And we do have to rely on our administration and staff and teachers. And we do, and we have, I believe, a very quality superintendent, assistant superintendent. Our principals are amazing, our teachers are amazing, our staff, all the ones that Mr. Jones spoke of this evening are all amazing. We're doing great things with preschool. We're doing great things with the ready schools and Innovative Learning Center. So, don't, you know, I hope that you don't lose sight of those things as well. And again, I do hope, sincerely hope and pray that we can get to a change here real soon. Nobody anticipated this spike. When the CDC guidelines came out, it was before the spike hit. They came out on January 4th. We were just barely a few days into starting up the spike, and then it went nuts after that. You know, almost a whole state's in red. So, but again, what I have heard people mention, I looked it up myself, no, but my understanding, the South, South Africa and the UK are kind of proceed where we're at, and that their spikes were very tall, but kind of short-lived. So, I hope that's, and pray that's where we're at as well. So, I'll just end with that tonight. So, you all have a wonderful evening, and this meeting is adjourned.